We'll call this meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary to the Board, Bobby Sheller. Lonnie Pinnell, absent or all others present? Board correspondent report, Amy.
Okay, so since, I think it was Christmas the last time I spoke, but I'm gonna go in reverse order. On Tuesday, January twenty-second, is that Wednesday? Tuesday, that was Wednesday. Governor Evers declared 2025 the year of the kid in his State of the State address, and he promised to increase funding for K-12 education, childcare, firearm restrictions, and mental health services. I thought the one of a very good thing was making sure children have access to food and clean water with his healthy meals, healthy kids, which would provide free lunch and breakfast in schools. So I think that's good. He also asked for that fifty million to be released for the new literacy efforts. Representative Kitchens is working on a bill to prevent the fifty million to go into the surplus. If it's not used by June right now, it will go into the state surplus. So he's trying to get a bill now with that, which is a little ironic since he's the one wrote the bill, but yet it still hasn't been released to the schools. And we're not getting that. The dates are set for the governor to deliver the biennial budget address. That is February eighteenth, which is also the day of a primary election for DPI candidates and even here in the city of Algoma. There are three candidates running for the Department of Public Instruction, Jeff Wright, superintendent for Sauk Prairie School District, Brittany Kinzer, a former special ed teacher, and Dr. Jill Underly. All right, Education Committee is set, and Representative Joel Kitchens is on that committee. He remained it, as well as Senator John Jaidler. Those two retained, there are new members in there. A record seventy million in funding was announced for public school libraries, which is kind of interesting. So that's kind of nice that we can get some extra money with that. And the Office of School Safety was due to have its funding expire, but after the recent tragedy in Madison, Josh Call is going to ask that two million be earmarked for that to continue so that schools can apply to get funding to increase safety measures in their buildings.
Okay. Two things to address in things that you brought up. I saw today something where it looks like it's gonna go to the Supreme Court. They have agreed to look at a couple of things, Act Twenty, the Act Ten, and also the holding of the fifty million dollars. So maybe, you know. But yes, it is a little ironic since Kitchens was behind the original bill, and then he has to write something to get them to release.
Encourage his party members to move it forward.
Right, right. The other thing is along with Joel Kitchens, I did send him a congratulatory message on his reelection and his position again in the Education Committee. I invited him to come to any one of our meetings and our school and to tour our charter school. I invited him to come to the open house, but it was a pretty short notice. And he did respond to me. He asked when the school board, he wanted to be reminded when the meetings were. And I told him when they are, and he wanted to be kept apprised of when the showcases are. So I told him, and so, yeah. I think, you know, he has a history of being on a school board. He understands that there are more down there now that have been on school boards, which at least gives them an understanding of the financing and some of the struggles. So, yeah. One of the things I told him is, you know, he's always been upfront with us, even when we don't like what we hear. He helps give us sort of the lay of the land down there so that we can have a plan. So anyway, it was a nice exchange, and I encourage board members and everyone else to stay active in communicating with our legislators because if they hear from us, you know, if we have a relationship, it does make a difference. Absolutely. And hopefully he'll come, and, you know, we can talk to him in person about some of the things that are important to us. Well, he said he'd let us know when he has an opportunity.
Yeah, so thank you. CISA report, Chris.
So as far as the actual meeting, we were in closed session for several hours discussing Colleen's replacement. If you go to the WASB site or the CISA site, there is now a posting to replace Colleen. Superintendents and other customers of CISA received surveys, the Board of Control received surveys on things that we're looking for with the next director. And then we would set up a schedule for March and April. It's very aggressive with first interviews, second interviews, decision-making. So within the next two months, we'll have a lot of meetings to get through the candidates. And Patty Vickman from WASB is helping us out with that search. And she helped us out with the search that got Colleen. So she's very familiar with the agency, and we're looking forward to working with her more. The only other announcement that came out of CISA is the Give Big Green Bay, the Northeastern Wisconsin Youth Apprentice Program that CISA manages. They have been selected as one of the fifty recipients of the Give Big Green Bay. So February nineteenth and twentieth, from noon until noon, huge fundraising efforts matched by the Green Bay Packers, all this excitement. The youth apprentice program is one of the fifty nonprofits selected to receive those donations. So that's really exciting for them.
And we have students in that program, this district. Okay, good. All right. Student representative report, Sophia.
Hi. Starting with the ski trip, they had their one-day ski trip today, so I'm excited to hear all about that. And then they will have their three-day ski trip this weekend. So that should be exciting for everyone participating. FLA has the regionals this Saturday, so hopefully someone can make it to the national setting. AVA, they're getting clean water in Africa. So you buy a blank canvas for five dollars and you can paint and draw on it, and then you return it February twelfth. And then again with AVA, they're having their pickleball tournament February eighth. They have many different time slots for intermediate time, which is like, I've been told it's like not beginners, but it's not like super like advanced from eight to ten-thirty. And then their beginner time is one o'clock. And then their advanced slash fifty-five plus is from one o'clock to three-thirty. And I've been told there's sixteen team slots like per, like, time. You can, I've been told there's also signup in the wellness center and ones interested. DI, they're having an ice cream social, and they'll be putting on a performance. That's the second, they start at one-thirty. There's free entry, five dollars per bowl of ice cream with your choice of topping from one to two-thirty, and a silent auction from one to two-fifteen. That should be interesting, I think. Oh, basketball, as I'm sure you've heard the buzzer. The boys play today versus Velders, and then Tuesday at NEW and Thursday here at O'Connell. The girls, they're playing today, Chubogan Falls. I've been told Chubogan's pretty good, so we'll have to see the results for that one. Tuesday and Thursday, middle school, they play Marinette and Gibraltar at Marinette and Gibraltar. And Friday, Sebastopol, the high school girls play again in Sebastopol. For bowling, varsity, they play at four-thirty tomorrow in Sturgeon Bay, Apple Valley. JV plays Saturday, same place at four-thirty again. And Saturday, they both play at four-thirty, or, sorry, ten-thirty and twelve-thirty. So that's pretty fun, I think, for ending the season on Saturday. So I think it should be a good, like, matches. The musical, Momia, I went yesterday, and I think they did really good. I think the singing was good. And hopefully it all went well, like, behind the scenes. And the period project, they're thinking about putting on a dance sort of like during the winter months when there's not really much going on, like, just before prom. And they're still doing the balloon camp. And it not only helps the environment, but like helps get period products for the schools. Yeah.
Let's see.
Yeah, a lot going on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't have any misconceptions or rumors. Public participation, has anyone sent in?
Yes, the Algoma DI team signed this week.
On Sunday, next week's Sunday, there's gonna be an ice cream social when all DI people are performing from one-thirty to two PM. And you get five dollars per bowl of ice cream, and you can have your choose of toppings and servings at one PM to two-thirty. And you can put a bacon good on your ice cream to make it extra special. It's at the Algoma Elementary at the Performing Arts Center. And we want you to, we want you to come to our DI performance. And the silent auction is at one PM to two-fifteen PM.
Thank you for the invitation.
No, mine is for my, oh, you gotta take one of the other day?
Yeah.
That's for the tournament, so on the twenty-second. Oh, you're at the high school.
The DI Northeast Regional Tournament, save the date to twenty-two, twenty-five.
Hopefully some of you can make it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cassie's down, and then Cassie. The only announcements I have are again, and I'm sure that you have gotten these, but I can't stress enough how helpful and useful these kinds of networking and informational opportunities are if any board member can make it. So the 2025 Day at the Capitol is coming up in March. The school law conference is February twenty-seventh. I went to a Day at the Capitol a few years ago. It's probably more than a few years ago now. But we went, a few of us went. And it is, again, we have a good relationship with Joel Kitchens, our assembly person, so that's nice. It's not like our only opportunity to meet with him, but it does make a difference. So, and it is very interesting the way they have it set up so that, and they make sure that you can see the people that represent your districts. If you go down there, they schedule appointments. So, again, a couple of things. If people are available, please take advantage of it. And then we had a few people who were able to go to the school board convention and would, I'd love to hear a little bit from those who went. You wanna start, Jeremy?
Sure. Well, I had a great time. That was a bonus. So I did quite a few sessions, also sat a little bit in the delegate assembly being a reserve delegate, just to kind of see the process. That was pretty exciting to be part of that legislative process. I didn't get to sit through the whole thing. I think it was scheduled for two hours, and when I left to go to another session, they were only half-done. So I didn't get to stay for the whole thing. But I got to sit in on the fiscal impacts of declining enrollment in Wisconsin, which was very eye-opening. School Finance One-on-One, which I could have sat there for five days listening to that. I was kind of a peeking out on finances there. Achieving consensus within your board and community, and then a charter school conundrum are the sessions that I attended, and all of them were excellent. And then speakers as well. The speakers were very good. So, great three days, and I look forward to doing it again next year.
Good, good. What about you, Amy? So I did one on board policies addressing artificial intelligence, which I found interesting just because that's new for me. I also looked at the WASB Superintendent Evaluation Framework. I know CISA VII is doing one, so I don't know how much they are gonna mesh. But it looked very similar to what we're doing. I think it's a great tool, and I think we should think about using it. Not only does it capture everything electronically, but it allows more face-to-face time setting goals with the superintendent. Then there was telling your story and measuring success with the strategic dashboard. I know we could use a dashboard here in the district where we can see what it is our kids are doing, how they're doing, and how they're progressing. So that was interesting to hear what other schools are doing and how it helps with building relationships with the community. Then I went to an all-new, calling all-new board members meeting about building connections and knowledge, and met Patty Vickman from Southern Door. So she's very nice, very encouraging, met a lot of people, a lot of networking, so that was good. Then I went to maximizing board excellence, the power of continuous improvement. Jeremy went with me on that one, and what was mind-blowing to me was an alumni of the school was, has his PhD and was doing the presenting. So Rob Demese was there, and I thought that was really encouraging. So that was fun. Then I went achieving consensus within your board and community, uniting visions, and equity in school funding was the last one that I went to. I didn't geek out on the one that you went to, but man, I looked at the resources. I'm like, I could really, I think I will do that one next time.
Yeah.
That looked like it was a very good.
It was three hours of finance.
Yeah.
But it's online, and I downloaded it.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do make all the materials available from even the ones you can't get to.
And there is a nine-session section on the WASB site that you could take to learn about School Finance One-on-One as well. It's just good to have a refresher.
Yeah, yeah. You had a cold week.
Very cold, and we had to walk. The shuttle wasn't working. But it was, you know, I'd come in because my previous, you know, work had all of these sessions. So I was curious what happened. It was seamless. It was wonderful. It was, as always, you go to the, you know, now I got fifty million different ideas. How can we do them?
Yeah, yeah.
But it was very invigorating and energizing.
Good, good. Well, I hope more are able to attend in the future. Obviously, it doesn't always work out with people's schedules.
Yeah.
But when you can go, it's always worth it. And glad it was worth it for you. Okay, we'll move on to administration reports, starting with superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Kick things off right away. Pre-takeaways, we hear from our auditors on how our first audit was done. And then Amber is not here tonight, so I'll be giving her financial update. And then the last thing is we'll be looking at enrollment seats for next school year and signing those today. Not only do we have Amber, we get another. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Haley. We get two for one. So included in your board package were both audits, both for the traditional schools and then as well as for AVA. So feel free to follow along as we go through the reports.
Excellent, yeah. So a couple, maybe a couple of new faces, but my name is, is Amber Druwski. I'm a principal out of our Green Bay office with CLA. Been doing government audits for about sixteen years, and that's all I do throughout the year. So very much ingrained in this. So if you have questions, even if they're not tonight, Jessie and Amber all have my contact information. Would be happy to answer any. And I have Haley Lopak here. She worked on, she's the director and manager on the engagement as well. Wanted to make sure that I get her in front of you guys as well. So if you have questions, either one of us are available for those. So I'm gonna start in the thicker bound document that you have. And it's the regular districts' financial statements. I'm gonna go to page one. "We've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the school district of Algoma as of and for the year-end in June thirtieth, 2024. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district." That's a lot of words, but it's a clean, unmodified opinion, the highest opinion we can provide from an audit standpoint. So there's no material misstatements within the financials that we're aware of and that the district is aware of throughout this. The basis for the opinion, obviously, we can't look at all of the transactions, so we have materiality thresholds. We use inquiry, risk approach, risk-based approaches, and so forth to determine sampling and whatnot. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. That is done through the signing of the management representation letter at the end when we release the reports. Our responsibility, has some Good Night Time reading on page two to four, to issue within the financial, to issue an opinion on the financial statements within the standards. Page six and seven, these are the government-wide financial statements of the district. So not how you typically adopt your budget, but it includes the capital assets of the district, your long-term debt and so forth, your OPAP, your other post-employment benefits, and, which is in an asset position because that is overfunded by about a hundred and, actually, three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand as of June thirtieth, 2024. You also have the proportionate share in the Wisconsin retirement system. That was in a liability position, slightly higher funded than the previous year. I think it went from ninety-six percent to ninety-eight. The Wisconsin retirement system manages that through the contributions. So that is the primary purpose of the government-wide, is to pull that long-term activity out of your, from a budget perspective. So page eight, page eight and, I'm gonna really, eight through eleven are the fund financials, so how the district adopts your budget. Just a couple of things here that I want to touch on. The general fund as of June thirtieth, 2024, had about four-point-three million dollars in cash. The general fund here does include the special education, so it is Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven. The fund balance at June thirtieth was in total about four-point-six million. We like to look from a financial health perspective at the unassigned fund balance portion. So that is about just over four-point-four million. That's about forty-two percent of your total expenditures. Your policy is slightly lower, I believe, and I might have it marked, twenty percent. That twenty percent, some people will say, is the forty-two percent too high. In today's economy and in the environment, I don't know that you can have it too high because inflation costs and all of these one-time type maintenance items that are popping up across districts, across the state, just because of aging infrastructure, buildings and things like that. A lot of them have done referendums, but those are very targeted usually. You may have to replace a roof. You may have to patch a roof. You may have to replace a boiler. Those are not things that you can plan for from a referendum standpoint. So with all of that said, generally speaking, we're kind of pushing our recommendation from a percentage up. And that's usually to the point of twenty-five to thirty-five percent, depending upon your cash flow, really. So if you're getting a lot of your cash flow from property taxes and that really state aids and those kinds of things, that higher unassigned fund balance prevents you from having a short-term borrow, is really what that leads to. So while, yes, it's higher than your policy, but you really have to evaluate all of those situations together to determine what that perfect percentage is for you. The percentages vary from district to district, from client to client. I do municipal work. Some are way up here, some are low just because of their cash flow, what their operations are, what their capital needs are. Currently, the district does have the Fund Forty-Six, where you're able to put some funds away. That helps, that alleviates the need for that, some of it. You also have community service and donation and those types of things. So those kind of come out of that. But really, just evaluate that for your own individual needs, not necessarily comparing across the board. So that's a big topic for us, and I think it's been a bigger topic of discussion over the, especially over, I would say, the last year and a half. So the other, any, the other piece is your referendum debt service has about five-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand. That is purely restricted for debt service, whether it's for refundings, advance or current, or simply making some prepayments on some future debt payments. Food service, not on this page, but it's in the back, but I'm just gonna pull it up here. Your food service fund balance was about two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. That is monitored very, I'm gonna say regularly, from DPI. They really like to have you be in that three-month expenditure amount. And if you don't, or if you're not in that piece, they'll send you a letter and ask you why. And then you gotta respond. A lot of times it's, okay, we need a new freezer. We need a new piece of equipment, and then they're usually satisfied. But you might get it every year. So just be prepared to respond to that. Community service has about a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars in fund balance. Donations has about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. The donation fund includes the items that were moved from Fund Sixty over to Fund Twenty-One. So it's Fund Twenty-One and Sixty, so your clubs and so forth, in addition to strictly donations. Long-term capital projects, Fund Forty-Six has about seven-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars as of June thirtieth. Then on page thirteen, your employee benefit trust, as I mentioned, your OPAP, your other post-employment benefit, was overfunded by about three-hundred-and-forty thousand. That is because you do have one-point-one million in your Fund Seventy-Three from a cash perspective. So, and that's invested within Nicolay Bank. Any questions on that financial piece for the district?
Does it look bad when our policy states twenty percent? I mean, because we traditionally have kept it well over that. We're not really that comfortable. In my mind, it was always, we do not want to go full over twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
Does it, from an auditing standpoint, is it better to have our policy closer to what we traditionally do?
So it's an across, there's various things that happen across the board. There's a couple of things. Some will like to add more to their Fund Forty-Six if they are over their policy. That does restrict you to fit your project within that, your plan. Some will, you know, we've seen a lot more districts go self-insured, where they then start to earmark some of those funds for insurance. We have some who simply they will assign amounts over X amount. Say their policy's twenty, they might do the entire amount over, or they might go like twenty-five or thirty, and they'll assign that for one-time capital expenditures within the general fund. And you can do that and just have a new line assigned fund balance within there, and then it's earmarked for that. It's easy to pull out. You can change it each year, depending upon your situation. But some are okay leaving it as long as they can explain it and explain the why. So it's not necessarily a rule. It's just what you feel comfortable with and what your situation is. I have some districts that have a much higher, but they are also trying to build that because they have a long history of short-term borrowing. So they're trying to correct that. That's a different situation. But that's what, they're intentionally over their policy for that purpose.
Have we been consistent around the forty percent mark?
I think we've been above thirty for quite a while. So I think this might be one of the highlights.
Yeah, and I don't think, let me just double-check here. There was a transfer into the, to the Fund Forty-Six, but there had been some years, if I remember correctly, that might have had a little bit of a higher transfer into Fund Forty-Six, but sometimes that's not known until year-end. And then maybe you just base that transfer the following year off of kind of where you think that's gonna be, especially if your budget is a little bit uncertain going into that next year, because you might use some of that fund balance in your budget process. So that's the other piece to kind of consider in there.
There's always a window between, I would say, October to December, where school districts don't get enough revenue in where school districts don't get enough revenue in to pay your basic needs, your payroll, your bills, utility bills and things like that. That's where a lot of districts will have to do short-term borrowing from a local bank to offset that cost. Um, we have not done that as a school district because of the fund balance being where it is.
Great question. On page fifty-seven, so i- in addition to just the financial audit, we also review the internal controls of the district. We don't issue an opinion on those, but we would be required to disclose if there's non-compliance or any findings that we have. Uh, we did not have any non-compliance, um, and we had one finding where it was just the preparation of the financial statements. Meaning we prepare this, we prepare about ninety-five percent of our clients' financial statements. So, um, Amber and Jesse review the financial statements, sign off on those, and that's through the management representation letter. In addition to that, because the district receives over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds, so it could be a million. Maybe you can fall below that number again. Um, we do have to issue an opinion on the federal and state awards, um, that, that the district receives. So we tested, um, excuse me, there's certain requirements that we have to follow to determine what to test each year. This year, we tested, uh, ESAR and the general aids, um, and that met our threshold. And we did not have, uh, any, any findings that related to either of those programs. That is the financial statements for the district. Then, this will be much faster, there is a sta- thicker staple document within that, that same bound document, and just a couple items that we have to, required to communicate to governance. So on page two of that, there were no new accounting policies adopted, and the application of existing policies was not changed for twenty twenty-four. The last two years, uh, we have implemented, um, GASB seven eighty-seven, maybe not implemented, but reviewed for GASB eighty-seven, which was the leases. Uh, that was two years ago, and then last year was GASB ninety-six for the subscription-based softwares that was evaluated. We finally had a little bit of a lull, and we didn't have any, um, to implement here for the district in twenty-four. Accounting estimates, the only estimate that is significant to be required to governance is the other post-employment benefit, um, estimate that is included for your, um, post-employment health. Uncorrected misstatements, as I mentioned, um, the, the lease standard, we do pass on the recording the lease. It is not material to the financial statements, but it's over the threshold to communicate to governance. So instead of adding a number of pages of disclosures, we add a sentence in here, or a couple sentences. Um, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Uh, it lists the corrected misstatements that we make, uh, that the district reviews and approves. Those are primarily related to your Fund seventy-three OPAP activity, investment activity, and then, uh, GASB sixty-eight seventy-five. No disagreements with management. Um, the audit goes very smoothly, um, very responsive and timely, so no issues from that perspective at all. We appreciate the, the help from, from the business office throughout. And then a couple graphs, uh, kind of summarizing what I talked about before, and then the management representation letter. Then, the smaller document, the GOMO Venture Academy. Page one has the very similar independent auditors report. Again, we issued a clean, unmodified O-K-N-A-N, um, on the academy, no issues from that perspective. And page four and five are again the government-wide financial statements. There is something new here this year, if you compare this current year and prior year. Because the district, um, received, typically if it's grant-funded, you have to record the capital asset, so there is a capital asset recorded here for forty-seven thousand dollars, um, on the book, so you will see that. The grant receivable remaining is about nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, uh, that was as of June thirtieth. And then on page seven, this gives a breakdown of the revenues and expenses. The district subsidy for the academy was about three hundred and four thousand dollars, and the federal sources, so the grant of a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and the district subsidy makes the fund balance be zero, so there's nothing carried over there. Again, we reviewed the internal controls, uh, the only finding we had here was again the preparation of the financial statements. And, um, in terms of the report to governance, no any, no changes, and again, no issues in issuing that, uh, and no uncorrected misstatements.
I just have one.
Yeah.
Do you have any suggestions for improvements in accounting or reporting or operating procedures?
I, not in terms of necessarily the, the numbers per se, but I think there's, I think there's two things that, um, I, I feel like during, during COVID and kind of changing time of technology and, and things like that, is number one, really looking at your capital project and what your needs are. Um, or, and not just what's capital in nature, but what your maintenance might be, and how that fits from a funding perspective over time. Uh, not just looking at the next year, three, five, seven years out, to be able to plan for that. Especially you have the fund balance, uh, maybe there's some things that maybe don't have to be done right now, but might save you some money, you have the money available, is that something that's an option? But always just kind of having that plan out there. The other piece is, um, making sure your policies and procedures are documented and updated. And I know Neolia does, does some of that, but really taking that to the next level from a detailed procedures perspective. So that's really not just the process, but considering the internal controls within those processes, um, reviews, approvals, um, those kinds of things, what, what's being done from a technology standpoint? What are maybe some risk areas that you feel? Um, and that can be across the board, not just in the business office. I think sometimes we look at it just in the business office, but across the board, there's a number of different, um, people that have roles within the financial, um, piece for the district. So that, to me, is a big thing that has kind of, I'm gonna say, there's been a lot of other things that have been priorities, and those haven't really maybe been up there across the board, not just here, not here, but across the board. Um, and then there are some changes, um, within the uniform guidance that came out, uh, effective for awards after October first, twenty twenty-four. And that has some new language as it relates to the purchasing or procurement requirements. Um, some of that's like the Title IX language and, and things like that, and how you have to, where you're purchasing from, what you have to do, um, if you're using federal funds for some of those. So making sure that all of that gets updated, um, and that you're fitting, fitting those requirements. But those are the two areas that I think kind of really sometimes get set aside that I think have a big, can have a big impact, um, going forward.
Thank you, Amber, it's always nice to see you.
Yeah, you too. And as I mentioned, if there's any questions after, we'll answer any. Um, and again, we appreciate, um, the district's help in, in doing this, it really is a, a smooth, smooth audit. We did meet with Amber Bean Newer, I shouldn't say this too, Haley and I came out, um, in, I forget when, uh, November maybe or December, in that timeframe, um, and sat down, went through questions, walked through the financials and things like that too. So we really appreciate that, um, uh, mutual assistance, we really are here to help. And if there's questions and things we can do, we wanna make sure that we can, can do that, so.
We appreciate all you guys too. We're one of the first districts that gets audited throughout the financial period, right?
Yep.
Usually the first one in July, right?
Well, so we get you fresh then.
You have your date booked, we're ready for next year, she's always making sure that we go in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a safe year.
Thank you.
If you didn't have enough numbers, I'm gonna throw some more at you, so, again, this is Amber's portion, um, couldn't be here, but, we're six months into the fiscal year, so halfway there. Some revenues that have been collected would be the equalization aid that has been received. And then we also have some flow-through dollars through IDAID, who, which supports special ed, um, funds. And so those have been collected as well. On the expenditure side, we have the Get Kids Ahead Grant, it's been fully expended. Um, part of those funds were used for Character Strong, which is a social-emotional curriculum at the elementary school level that, um, Ms. Krajewski will be using with students, or has been already, I think. The Huddle Program, which is a program at the middle school and high school, where we have a gentleman, um, forget his name.
Zach Pate.
Zach Pate is coming in three times a week, I believe, to meet with small groups of some male students and being a great role model for those students. And we also have some money being used towards Hope Squad, which is a, um, youth suicide prevention program that is being run by Aaron Bologna and some students. The auxiliary gym lighting was replaced, um, with a new floor. We found that the old lighting systems was just a little dark, um, because the floor is now a gray color, so we replaced those with LED lights. Um, those are also qualified for the Focus on Energy rebate, so we'll be getting some money back from that. And then, Mr. Durst is well underway, working on, um, the website redesign. Um, so we're starting to see some expenditures for that come in. And then the last one would be our Fund twenty-seven, which is alternative educational setting for two of our students that are receiving services in Green Bay, so. Um, our Funds thirty-nine, forty-six, and forty-nine, um, we've collected all of our tax revenue in January and February from the municipalities. For Fund forty-six, which is a non-referendum, um, the purchase of the cargo trailer was completed in December and has arrived. And then we're starting to get more invoices in from McKinstry, um, so that is being, um, billed out as we receive those. And then we've also turned some investments or CDs around and reinvested them in December, so. Also included at your packet, um, or at your, um, stations here was the fund balance report, which Amber is doing quarterly, I believe, so you can see where our fund balances for the different funds are at. Um, I won't go through these, but just make sure you look at the, uh, footnotes that go along with each of the funds as you go through those, those are important. And also included is just some graphs on where the balances have been, um, year-to-date, so. And the last slide she has is just the referendum financial update. So Fund forty-nine began with just over, close to about ten million. Um, expenditures for McKinstry was three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight. We've earned interest in just December alone, over eleven thousand, which leaves our remaining balance at nine point five million, so. Any questions about finances? I'm sure Amber would have did a much better job, though. Um, all right, we're gonna transition into the enrollment numbers for the grade levels. So, um, these are current projected enrollment numbers for twenty-five, twenty-six, based off of the, um, our second Friday count, which is in January tenth is when we had to submit it and to DPI. So you can see where our projected is, and then our special ed projected enrollment. And then also included is our speech-only students, um, that qualify for those services under an IEP. Again, this is the only elementary we're looking at. Um, I highlighted grade five, both in the projected enrollment and special ed, because those are the ones that we're recommending that we cap for next year, based off of just high student needs right now in those grade levels. Then we get to our middle school and high school, these are projected enrollments for the grade levels. Um, just coming in over about two hundred and ninety-five students we're looking at for next year. Fifty of those students will receive special education services, and we have no speech-only students here at the middle school and high school. So with that information, this is what, um, we are recommending to the board to vote on tonight, would be to close open enrollment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for regular education seats in grades fi- in grade five. We're doing that based off of class size ranges and faculty-student ratio ranges. Then all other, uh, regular education seats for grade levels will remain open at the elementary. We're also recommending to close open enrollment for special education in grades five, ten, and eleven. Um, and those are due to class size ranges and faculty-student ratio ranges. All other grade levels will remain open for open enrollment then.
What is the faculty-student ratio range?
What is it?
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's not a direct one-to-one or one-to-two, it's based off of student needs, really. Um, some of these grade levels, we have some students that need more significant adult support. Um, I wouldn't say that they're one-to-one all day, but a good portion of the day, they would require more adult assistance, so.
But I don't mean to special ed, what is it for the regular ed? So like twelve to one?
It's up to individual board policy, we don't have anything set on that, so.
Okay.
You wanna speak anymore about special ed, Marie?
No, I knew you did a great job.
Okay.
You can, the numbers tell it all.
Grade five, we've capped pretty much every year since I ran four Ks, it's just kind of very high needs class.
As they go up every year.
Yeah.
Like, care of your grade six?
Next year's grade five.
This year's, this year's grade four.
Can you go back to that slide, I'm just curious what the number was? Forty-three, yeah, that was kinda large. Oh, grade four?
Remember grades five and sixteen together? So, um, most students, they run more of a middle school schedule. It's not the traditional, traditional one teacher for home-based students, so.
Yeah, and between five and six, there's nineteen in the projected special ed for the year end. Any other questions or discussion in that? We will be, these will be action items.
So in the years past, like, um, Ms. Hornet said, we've always capped that grade level for special ed. New this year would be capping it for just the regular ed enrollment, so.
Do you see that happening some, can you go back to that one slide? So third and fourth is nine to nine, so it's one less.
Yep.
Do you see that kind of progressing in the same pattern?
So there's additional teachers in those grade levels too, so we, we tended to keep those class sizes smaller at the primary grades. So again, that staff-student ratio would be lower because of that, though.
And I would say, sorry, go ahead.
And I would just echo what has already been said, is that since that group has been in four K, um, special ed, gen ed, just the combination of all of their needs, whether it be social-emotional, uh, basic needs, mental health, um, behavior, it's just very diverse, um, much more so than any of the grade levels.
So it's not necessarily a trend, it's just situational?
Very much.
So how are you preparing for when they get into middle school and high school?
Good question. We've been doing a lot of work, especially with this group. And I have that on my agenda.
Okay, since what if I get, and I don't mean you have the answer now, but at least you're, you're thinking about it. It was nice that you gave the perspective that this has been, we've been looking at it, so you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay.
We also have to look at open enrollment for Elgoma Venture Academy or AVA, um, because they're considered a separate school. Um, so I don't know if we've done that in years past, um, but, yep. Um, so these are enrollment numbers that were projected for next year, two eighth grade, um, five ninth grade, five tenth grade, eighth, eleventh, and twelve, twelfth graders or twelve seniors. We obviously don't know enrollment for seventh grade at this point, because, um, parents haven't signed up yet, so. So our recommendation would be to accept all regular ed and special education, um, seats in grades seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve for AVA. Um, this time, we don't feel like we need to cap any of those. The ideal number that we're looking to go up to is forty-five, um, in AVA, and that's what the contract states. Um, ideally, that's the cap, right? Um, ideally, numbers have ranged from thirty-two to thirty-eight, I would say, is that correct?
Yeah, we've had awards to like forty-two, but thirty-five, we always call our sweet spot. That's just for kids and adults, it's kind of our comfort level.
The one piece I think we'll be watching closely is that special education enrollment, um, and just staffing-wise for that. Again, it's based off of student needs, we had a new student enroll this year who is a senior, who really just needed much more adult support than what we've seen in AVA before. Um, next year, that student is possibly gonna be going over to.
In the PTC.
Yeah, what's the program? So that may open up a little bit of time, but again, we might have to monitor that closely in terms of, um, AVA doesn't have a special ed teacher assigned just to them, so we may have to look at that at some point, but.
I have another question. So if we cap these numbers and a family moves to the area, and they have a child in fourth grade and third grade and in tenth grade, but we've capped the tenth grade number, we can't take any of those?
This is open enrollment.
Open enrollment only.
Open enrollment.
They were outside the district.
Gotcha.
Any students residing within our district, we have to accept them. So again, that's what our recommendation would be then for AVA. And we'll, I'll pull this back up when we get to that point to vote on.
Any other discussion? Okay, we will move on, elementary principal.
Okay, great. First things first, just wanted to share that, starting right after break, um, the elementary school released a new format for our, um, weekly parent communication. Um, in the past, it was an email with some bulleted points, and then, um, individuals could submit flyers, and those were included as an attachment on that email. Um, we're keeping with that Tuesday communication pattern, um, but instead, I've taken, we've taken all of the information and put it into more loose letter format, so there's a section where there's a note from me, um, and then I'm able to highlight different happenings within the school, I can include pictures, links, um. It's just a little bit more accessible, um, it's definitely a little more aesthetic. Um, and then it has some really great features, one of them being that it's fully translatable into a multitude of languages, including Spanish. Um, so that has been sent out three times already, I think, the fourth will go out tomorrow. I'm gonna have gotten some really good feedback on that, for sure.
And you sent, we had, I think you included a link, and we, I did see it, it was very nice.
Yeah, so, that's a huge positive. As far as Act Twenty, and then our ELA curriculum update. So we did all of our Act Twenty winter mid-year assessments. So all of our four K through third grade students were screened again. We then completed all the diagnostics for anyone who fell below the twenty-fifth percentile. Reading plans were updated, sent to families. We did have some additional students that required reading plans this time around at the mid-year, but that was to be expected, because the benchmarks changed from beginning of the year to middle of the year. One thing that we were really excited about is that many school districts in the area waited until mid-year to administer all these assessments for the first time, because the requirements started as of mid-year. We wanted to jump in right away at the beginning of the year, just so we had something to compare it to, and also so that we could get our processes in order and make sure that we were ready to go. So as far as the process, it was a super smooth transition. It did take a lot of time and effort and work, so we certainly can't alter that from all of those that, that did involve, but the process was really smooth. And I'll share more information on those reading plans next month, when I share out the AGR mid-year data, so that has all of our goals, and we'll be able to see by grade level kind of where that fell. But that is awesome. Last month, you heard a presentation from our reading specialist, Daniel Schultz, and then one of our teachers, Emily Krieger, and they presented to the board about the CKLA curriculum, which is on the agenda later for approval for grades four to six. Pending approval, we plan to start putting together a pilot plan with Charlotte Meyer from CISA seven. So she's the one who kind of led our team through the curriculum review process. And then the next phase is putting together some commitments related to what a pilot could look like yet this school year. So that's the next step. We've also been working with our CKLA rep to get us a quote put together. There's one small hang-up, being that the CKLA released the third edition after the second edition was placed on the approved list for the Joint Finance Committee. Technically, the third edition is not on the approved list. With everyone that we've been talking to, Charlotte Meyer has her connections at DPI. It does sound like CKLA is going through the proper channels to seek approval, to be on the list, but there is no set timeline yet for when that will happen. So we are hoping to still order it, but we're just waiting just a little bit longer to see if they'll at least release some kind of information in regards to a timeline, so that we can either move ahead and purchase and submit for reimbursement if there comes available, or hold off a little bit to see. It's hard to know, there's so many different factors. We, we still, we had this conversation as a lead team, regardless of if the third edition is or is not on the list, we still feel that it is. What is, what will be best for our students and our teachers, we have posted their full support. So we would like to forward that pending board approval, of course. And then the last piece that is, we're already looking at training dates for all staff. So I know summer feels a ways away yet, but we're hoping to lock in some dates soon. We're not able to do that until we submit the purchase order, of course. So it's just, everything's kind of at a pause, just for a brief moment, but we will soon make some good headway on that. And then lastly, CISA seven coaching. So this is definitely related to the group that we were just talking about, our current fourth grade class. We have used a lot of our CISA seven days, working with Charlotte Meyer on literacy, and we recently added an additional three days with Katie Tennyson from CISA seven. She is a behavior specialist and coach. So she works with school districts in a bunch of different ways, but specifically related to coaching teachers through challenging behavior situations, which is kind of what we've experienced with this group of students since they've been in four K. Each year, since they started, we've tried something different. So in four K, there was a group of students that showed, four K students that showed up on the first day of school, off the bus. They were not registered, we did not know where they lived, we did not know who they were connected to. So they, I mean, just to kind of paint a picture, that's the only time that's happened. And there were a couple of kids that that included. So that group, we kind of did a, kind of like a transitional classroom in a way, because they had a lot of social skills that they really needed to work on first before they could even think about academic stuff. So that was four K. First grade, we tried to strategically place, or kindergarten, we tried to strategically place them in classrooms. I think first grade is when we midway through the year had to switch up which group went to specials with which group, because that was a whole different mixture. So it's just consistently been something we've been looking at. This year, we added the third section of fourth grade. Even though our third grade numbers are a little bit higher, we opted to break the fourth grade class into three sections. So we had a teacher move up a grade level, and we're still kind of having the same challenges. So we've brought Katie Tennyson in to just help us look at things through a different lens, because it's not a one-student thing, it's not a two-student, three-student, it's.
Not just special education.
And it's not just special education either, it's just across the board, very different. And every year, we've seen the impact that that has on our staff as well, and it's just, it's a lot. So we're just really looking to look at it differently and see what we can do with someone's fresh perspective. So Katie Tennyson came in, what, a week and a half ago? She did her first observations. We've met a couple of times with the teachers. So it's kind of a cycle of observations in person, and then debriefing meetings in person, action planning, and then we do some follow-up virtual meetings all together. So it's the fourth grade teachers, the two special ed fourth grade teachers that have kids in those classes, our school counselor, myself, Emery, and our school psychologist, when they're able to attend. And Katie Tennyson is coming tomorrow for the full day, so she'll be with us. And we just visit the classrooms, we just see everything. When she was here last time, we did a lot of just classroom observations. This time, there's certain areas that the teachers have identified that they would like additional feedback on, like one teacher, you know, that they, she has a certain writing group that she has struggled with, and she'd like some feedback on that. So it's very much live in the moment coaching, and then some strategic action planning after that. So it's been a positive. But in regards to your question maybe that you had asked before, is future planning, we're hoping to carry some of this through down to fifth grade, so that our fifth grade teachers have a chance to work with the same kind of support also. What that'll look like in middle school, I don't, I don't know. I can change between now and then, but it's definitely something that we have been strategically at.
And you're taking notes, you can write your own book?
You bet. I wish, I wish I took more notes than I actually did. Oh, and one more thing not on here. We were informed that one of our golden apple nominees has been recognized as a teacher of distinction. So Daniel Schultz, our reading specialist and title-one interventionist, she has been recognized as a teacher of distinction. So we'll be posting that on social media soon. And then it sounds like the rest is in the judge's hands, so that's all that I know.
Great. Any comments or questions? All right, middle school, high school principals report, Dave?
All right, I'm taking the easy way out. I brought Courtney Smith. Secret weapon at the high school, so there you go. How about it?
Thank you.
Quick, quick question. Why are we adding the credit? Why are we upping the graduation?
Why are we upping the credit requirement? Because we've kind of been seeing it, and I look back a few years at some of the historical credits of students who are coming into their senior year. A lot of our seniors, or incoming seniors, have maybe a credit and a half, on average, a credit and a half to maybe two and a half credits left in order to graduate, which is less than a semester's worth of classes. So in an effort to, as we've been calling to keep more butts in seats, and to also just encourage students to take advantage of all the opportunities that there are here within these walls, and not to just say, well, I don't need to be here, I'm not in sports, I'm just, gonna just come to school with what I need, and then I'll be gone. We're trying to just encourage students to, you know, take, even if it's not classes, like how can we get them enrolled in youth apprenticeships so that they can? Because we've got a, you know, at least one student this year who's been in youth apprenticeship the last two years, and he's now going to be signed as an apprentice at the end of this year by Myron, and they're gonna take him on as a full-time apprentice and train him, and give him the education that he would otherwise need to go and get at, like a technical college, and save him all that tuition money. So trying to encourage students to take advantage of more opportunities like, like that, like such. So you've reviewed the breakdown of the credits. You see that we're putting it more towards just electives, and then kind of blending those CTE credits that originally were broken out as one point five, kind of blending those into electives, so that students can continue to explore all types of areas of interest, especially for our students who are looking at taking more college-level classes that oftentimes fall within the mold of fitting the core, core areas. So we don't want to hold them back at all. But also with the implementation of students allow, being allowed to earn career and technical education credits in middle school, if students are taking a family consumer science course or an art course in middle school, it's actually going towards their elective or CTE credits already. So we've had middle schoolers who are walking into high school having those one point five credits already done. So just trying to continue encouraging further, further education, and looking at a rollout of it, so that next year's graduating class only has an extra half credit, a little credit.
How does it compare to our neighboring districts?
They're more competitive now, I would say. Quite a few more of our surrounding districts had twenty-five, twenty-six, even I think twenty, twenty-eight.
Luxembourg is twenty-seven point five, I looked that one up. Because I was curious too, and I started Googling other school districts, and then I was like Luxembourg.
Yeah, I believe Southern Door was twenty-four, but that was probably the, I think, all other, like, door county schools are twenty-five now.
Kiwanis might be a little twenty-three, maybe? Can't remember what Kiwanis was, but yeah, so that's what made me ask.
Yeah, just trying to, I guess, not stay competitive in that realm, but also just be on par with, with other schools and, yeah, just again, continue to show kids all the wonderful opportunities that are here for them, so.
And there are, that course handbook is amazing.
Yeah. Do you want me to talk about that?
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
You know, you're not gonna mention this, but I gotta acknowledge the work that Courtney and Dave have done on this. They sent some communication out to the families ahead of time, before this meeting, so there was no surprises. And we did get some feedback from parents, which was very welcome. And that kind of guided to some conversations we had around how to disperse those credits. So it was a very collaborative effort. They worked closely with the staff members here at the middle school and high school on how some of these credits can be broken down. So this was not, by any means, a top-down approach. It was very much collaboration among all stakeholders, so.
Yeah, a few questions on the policy. And just, just for reference, so on the first page where it says personal financial literacy, half-credit class of twenty-twenty and beyond, but then a couple of sentences down, it says a student graduating prior to twenty-twenty-eight must also have participated in curriculum relating to financial literacy in order to earn a diploma. So that's been like that for, for, forever, right? So no matter who graduates, you have to have that half-credit?
Yep, that's been a breakout for a couple decades. In previous years, we had had career planning and personal finance from NWTC plugged together in the same half-credit course. And this year, we did away with the career planning, we made it its own course, and then made financial, financial literacy its own standalone, and that was in accordance with some new legislature that had come forward that was requesting that it was classes twenty-twenty-eight and beyond, but we already have it in place, so just to be in compliance.
I think you said, so the ten credits right now would be eight credits, right? So the two extra credits will be elective in order to graduate?
Yes.
So that's moving to ten. And then on the next, the next page, under the graduation credit, one, two, third paragraph towards the end, it says, "Class will not be factored into the student's high school grade point average, and the class will be factored into the student's high school grade point average." But then it also says, "When classes are held at the high school, appropriate transportation." Oh, I got myself confused here.
You're talking about where it says it will not be factored, and then will be factored in the very next sentence?
Yes, yes, that's, yes, exactly.
Yeah, and under the bold section, graduation credit as a middle school student, the third paragraph, it has a sentence in there. It's a, because I.
It said, "Will not be factored into student's high school grade point average, and then the class will be factored into the high school grade point average."
So do you have a decision on that? Is it going to be factored in the?
We're talking specifically about middle schoolers that have high school credit courses. The question is, will it come towards their high school GPA prior to the beginning of high school student? If they take the course prior to the middle?
It's kind of saying both things, right? It will be factored, and it's saying it won't be factored.
Probably missing a strike through on one of those parts, right?
I don't think we've ever counted them as credit or for grade point in middle school.
That would be my preference if the board votes on it, that it does not come toward their high school GPA.
So the last sentence that will be factored would be?
Yeah, like you said.
We're missing the red line.
Yeah. That does sound right to me.
So then, assuming, and this was a draft policy, so that's why we need to. But when we do get to consider it as action, we will know that that is, that is part of what the policy is for that, so.
Do we want to strike the part of transportation too, or is there ever going to be a?
Well, I had that outlined, but yeah. Where it says, "When classes are held at the high school, appropriate transportation shall be arranged." Isn't that pretty standard?
Well, they're here.
They're here.
Right, that's what I mean, they're already here, so they don't need transportation.
But let's dream big and think that eventually that middle school's going back down to the building that's just high school up here. Let's dream big. Stay positive.
I don't think it hurts to have it in here, though.
I don't know.
I don't think it makes a bearing on our decision tonight in terms of our action, so.
No.
This policy is just proposed, and I think has to probably get through committee and for funding anyway. So we'll, so it'll be fun. Yeah, but I, I have to echo, it just blows my mind when I look at all the offerings our little school has before I do this. I mean, bravo, and bravo to the staff that is willing to do the teaching at these college health courses, you know, because that's more work for them, and they have to have the qualifications and.
Yes, I like the sales training class that you teach, Mr. Roberts, I'm like, ooh.
Yeah, just compare.
Can I enroll in that?
I don't teach that anymore. You can enroll, they have adult classes, usually on Tuesday nights.
I do have one question, and this is just for my knowledge. So with the career clusters, the broad range of classes outstanding, do those apply to both elective credits and required credits if they were to take that line of study?
Yes, because I think like a, like a mathematics course could go into.
Right, so they would first use their credits as required, and then anything after?
Yes, yep, as soon as they reach that required number of credits in a core area, it starts trickling down into their electives. Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep. One thing to note about the graduation requirements, that half a credit of health that's required, starting to see kind of a trend of where students might be putting that class off until later in high school, and kind of find yourself with a junior, senior sitting in health class, and it's kind of like, all right, yep, gotcha. So with our middle school rotations that we're doing, we're trying to make an effort so that, starting in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, middle schoolers will be completing that health requirement in seventh and eighth grade as combined effort between our family consumer ed teacher, Erin Malone, and our bioed teacher, Andy Carl Kramer. So trying to make it so that by eighth grade, those students have completed health.
Well, that's great. That's excellent.
So now, would that, and so would, would that be counted then as their high school credit?
It would be counted as that graduation requirement, yes.
But isn't that what this states, that if they took a high school credit class in middle school, it wouldn't be counted in the policy?
To towards their GPA.
GPA, okay.
GPA will accumulate their freshman year, but they can earn credits prior to their freshman year. There's a little distinction there.
Yeah, and that's something that I can go back in and check in power school, that when courses are being built and assigned to students, that I make sure that there's a check of. Towards GPA or not GPA, that's something I can, I can do on the backside of things.
Difference between the slow to turn and.
Wouldn't that be something?
Again, dream big.
If you'd like me to touch on any of the new courses, I would be certainly glad to, we had a number of teachers who were really on board this year to take on. Not only college level classes, but just to kind of redesign their course sequencing for beginners, Jeff Marie, like our agriculture department. Proposed a plethora of new courses for us.
I saw that, so that was gonna be my question, are all of these offered here or some of these in conjunction with?
All of them.
Okay, yeah, he's very, there's a lot.
So, uh, his goal was to realize that there's a greater number of entry-level classes. Cause he was, you know, handed a curriculum when he was walked in and, or when he walked in this year and has been doing a great job with it that wants to try and figure out how we can have more classes in the fall semester that are kind of just more introductory that way. The spring semester students come back to him, he's like, alright, let's build upon what you just learned and we're also trying to incorporate two NWTC courses for him. Next into business, we are looking at combining three courses, two of which Marie has already taught and one brand new one. Business Principles, Marketing Principles and Business Law, looking to combine those all into a block experience that would, with successful completion of a C award, students nine college credits. We're looking to maximize her Microsoft Office course, combining what's now a year-long course into a semester. To help kick award kids with Microsoft Office accreditation. She's created an FBLA course for next year to create a space for students who are within the organization to work on their projects and their leadership skills. And activities and in the falls, that way they are prepared for the summit as Sophie mentioned is gonna be coming up. Also for her, she's going to be kind of reworking her offering in the middle school rotations for next year with doing a little bit of some keyboarding, but also. I've asked her if she could focus on the gold suite because here at high school, we use a lot of Google, Gmail, Sheets, Docs, you name it. So helping kids kind of have those foundational skills by the time they walk into high school and just be more successful in their classes. Into English, we've got three new UWGB classes coming to us, English Composition, Communication and an Intro to Literature course. And then with our two NWTC courses that we already do offer, we're gonna be looking to combine those into one class period. Just because NWTC generally runs their classes at an eight-week timeframe, so we are finding that students were kind of like. This could be moving at a faster pace for me, so we're looking to get them six college credits within one class period by doing so. Family Consumer Science, you can stop me at any time if you don't want me to walk you through it, but.
Principles of Sanitation.
Yes, Principles of Sanitation is being tacked on to the nutrition course that's already being offered, they're each a one-credit option. And the Principles of Sanitation is coming from the standpoint that with successful completion of the courses. With the successful completion, students can earn their SafeCer certification and kind of just looking at it that we've got a decent number of students in our student body who work at. Restaurants within our area, so looking to kind of maybe just help provide them a little extra step up in terms of the work that they're doing outside of school. Technology and Education is being tacked on to another early childhood education class, we've really gained a lot of interest. In Aaron Malone's early childhood classes this year, so we're trying to add this course on in an attempt to add more courses geared towards. Preparing the next wave of educators. And focusing on what our students are kind of interested in is the contemporary healthcare practices, cause we are seeing. A large number of our students in the tenth, eleventh grade that are interested in healthcare, so looking to provide another healthcare option within our walls outside of the. CNA course that our students are completing at NWTC. On page twenty-two, we're gonna have a few new electives with FIAE. The one that will stand out is we're gonna have a UW Green Bay FIAE Personal Wellness Course. That's gonna run alongside another personal wellness course that students can kind of pick, they want high school credit or the college credit. We're finding that a few of the UW, or the UW, yeah, the UW system schools have a wellness requirement for part of their general education requirements, so we're. Kind of trying to find some classes that for students who are four-year bound, that we can try and knock as many general ed requirements out of the way as possible. That's also coming from the standpoint of we've got a growing number of students interested in the Rising Phoenix Program. So we're trying to see how we can get more courses here within our walls to make that program only more accessible for our students. Starting on page thirty-two for Social Studies. AP Macroeconomics is gonna be an effort to award students college credit in a class that's already being taught, Alex Stenland's already teaching Principles of Economics, so we figured let's. Make it potentially college credit-bearing if we can. He's also gonna be adding another new course next year with Developmental Psychology. This is in response to an increase of students interested in the medical field, this is a class that NWTC requires all incoming nursing students to have completed and we've got ten students. This year alone, who are looking to complete that course, so looking to just offer it within our walls so that it's free and the district's not paying for it. Haley Pavlat's gonna be adding some new courses to her repertoire. National Parks and Monuments, I think is gonna be a really interesting course and exciting, especially nice to incorporate with our Out West trip, so kind of to. Tag team there, she's got a huge interest in national parks, I think that'd be really cool. And then she is going to be offering two UWGB courses, as she does have her masters, but they're going to be education courses. And one of them has a service learning component, so I know that there have been talks about some volunteer hours, so this is gonna be a class where there's gonna be volunteering required. As a part of it, so again, an effort to have more courses in terms of teacher preparation. And then lastly, in Social Studies is Jeff and Lisa's gonna be having a new middle school elective. That's gonna be called Technology in the Social World, so maybe you know that our world is only coming more technologically and screen-based. So trying to have a, a class that provides just some educations, I mean, appropriate use in the digital media arts. Maybe even use like the screen printer and three D printer here in the tech lab, so. I think that's that at the middle school, high school level. And then we've got a new elective option that's listed down in Other Opportunities in the book. Which ABA is at their doors for a Passion Project elective course for middle schoolers, so up to eight students will have the ability to kind of test. Test drive what a project-based learning is, so I'm very excited for that opportunity, cause I think there's a lot of students who are curious. About what ABA is and what it could do for them and I think there's a lot of students who would find how beneficial that type of learning actually really is for them.
Yeah, allows them to put their toe in the water and see if it's the right fit or not without making a big commitment, no, I saw that and I thought, what a great idea.
So I think just overall, trying to optimize the opportunities that are here and thankfully we have some teachers who are just really on board with it and are willing to take on. That greater vote because they wanna do this in the best interest of the students. And also just trying to just drive more opportunity for our students to be successful outside of our walls regardless what path they're taking, if it's. You know, if it's technical college, if it's four-year, if it's, you know, workforce, how do we just make sure that they are the most prepared they possibly can be?
Makes me wanna go back to school.
Doesn't it? That's what I think.
Do we have any idea on how much money our district saves students by offering these college credits each year, like is their rough estimate?
Well.
Yeah, we have a number, do you know what the number was from last year? Just from last year.
It's like ninety-seven, ninety-eight thousand dollars in college tuition just from NWTC alone, I think I started a, I started this, yeah. So last year, our students completed what, five hundred and ninety-eight credits. Through NWTC, which ended up being just shy of ninety-eight thousand dollars in college tuition saved.
That's amazing.
Best used in one year.
Best used in one year, yep, and when it actually, you've got a booklet that can be shared with you if you're interested, it's just more, more light reading material. That kind of actually puts us up against all the other schools within the area, I would say probably like C six, seven, C six area that are also doing transcribe credits through NWTC and. Really puts us on a great competitive platform with a lot of our area schools, so it's, it's really nice to see that.
We're better, is what you're saying, than a lot of.
No, not, no, I, I. No, I just think, it just, it's a real big testament to the, the district and what it has to offer.
But we do offer more than a lot of.
Oh, for sure, yep.
Do we see also a higher percentage of kids furthering their education because of having these courses available in high school? Or is it about the same?
That's data that I would probably need to be around a little bit longer to really pull. But, you know, from the conversations that I have personally with students, I feel like there's more who are coming to me who are like, I don't really know what to do, but. You know, knowing what I could do with all of this, I feel like I have a better direction, I know that I at least wanna go to like NWTC and, and get a degree and. I think kids are just also just becoming more aware of the cost savings that it is, I think, you know, with the Rising Phoenix Program and knowing that you can have your associate's degree, I mean. We've got four students in our senior class who are in our program, we've got twelve in our junior class and we just had our info meeting last week for the next upcoming cohort and I think there were probably. Twenty-five kids and twenty-five to thirty kids in attendance and I'd say probably twenty raised their hand as to who might be interested in such a program. So, and we've got some really great support from the G B when it, when it comes to that program and, yeah.
Well, and it's so nice if we can give students the opportunity to try things in high school. To decide if it is something they like or not, instead of what it used to be, you know, you'd go to college and then switch your major, switch your major and switch your major because you. Would find that maybe it wasn't quite what you thought it would be, so the more we can give the students opportunities through, you know. Apprenticeships or this, that and the other, to save some money down the road.
Yeah, absolutely, our youth apprenticeship numbers are certainly up, I wanna say we have at least sixteen students right now partaking in a, a YA between the junior and senior class, so.
Great work.
Courtney, what would be on your wish list? What, what aren't we offering that would be like your bucket list of, gosh, if we could get. X, Y, Z in here, I would think that would be a real big seller.
I think for the better part, every subject area has college credit.
Dave, anything that you're like, on top of your head that you're like, man, we have a gap here?
You know, I'm gonna say not really. And, and the reason I say that is because we have, since I've been here, we've explored a lot of different things, right? We've explored having a massive tech ed department and all, and, and everything that we do has to be sustainable. And so the things I've seen that is encouraging to me is we moved from, we've got a staff, a massive tech ed department to, we can now. Place our students into an environment where they can learn, possibly get paid and end up with a certificate and determine if they like it or not like it without having to staff that area, so we can send. These kids out to do these youth apprenticeships, I mean, the opportunities right now, I mean, I'm gonna quote Jeremy, like, I wanna go back to high school, the, the things that are offered to our students. Are incredible, truly, so am I sitting here going, yeah, I wish we had this or I wish we had that, no. I wish others' schools would look at us and realize what we're doing and go, yeah, I want some of that.
No, that's a perfectly acceptable answer.
Yeah, we just want those tools to come here.
Yeah, and I, I know Courtney's taking, taking a good, a good chunk of time tonight, but I wanted to just point out that Courtney is doing, she talked about so many new things that are offered. What Courtney is doing really, really well is she's highlighting opportunities where we can grow. And to the teacher's credit, they're saying, okay, yeah, let's grow there, so I, I, and, and again, it's all built on what's been here before, so I wanna credit this school or the previous administrations. This didn't just happen, it's been growing and growing and growing and it's, it's, everything is connected and if like everybody just does their part and focuses on what our kids need and what's best for kids. And we end up where we are now, hopefully we continue to grow and meet our kids' needs, cause it's, it's, it's exciting to be a part of, to be honest.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you, Courtney.
Yes, please for sharing.
Just wanna point out real quick to, to Jeremy's point about how do we track these kids? Some conversations we've been having with the foundation, Elgin area education foundation, is we don't have a database on our alumni, so. We put this, together this quick Google form that we'll be sending out in the next Wolf Review, we'll put it out on social media as much as we can, but. Anyone that's graduated from Elgoma is welcome to fill this out so we can start collecting information on when did you graduate, what your career path is, where you're living. And then in turn, we can send them information about the district in return and say, hey, look at what we're doing as a district and celebrate, celebrate things, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Are we gonna hear about Academic Planning Night?
Academic Planning Night, that's again, I'm just.
Say, why are you even here? Headed night off.
Because I spend a lot of my time in his office, I'm like, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? What do you think about this? So Academic and Career Planning Night, so in the kind of beginning stages, hopefully. Thrown an idea out to the staff to do more of a academic career planning day that kind of blends in tonight a little bit. Just from the point of wanting to have a more intentional scheduling process. Because I know that there's a lot that goes on after school hours and a lot of times our, you know, our high schoolers, they come in after school, they gotta get practice, they gotta go to CCD, they've got. This and that and the other things, so they come in, they're like, yep, that looks good, that looks good, yep, sure, great, and then, you know, a few weeks later, they're coming in, can I actually change this? Can I change this? So. I'd actually like to, you know, release the schedule next week so that the week leading up to scheduling, we can sit down with more students and, alright, let's talk about what's in your best interest, what are you thinking you're interested in right now? How do we fit these classes that'll best put you on that path? So trying to think about how we can maybe spend like the last two hours of that day, allowing kids to go to their classrooms, talk with teachers and then do their sheets and then. After school hours, we can invite middle school students and parents up, so those current seventh graders and incoming current sixth graders and seventh graders to come up with their parents, cause oftentimes those are the students who are more. I don't know how this works, I've got more questions and parents ultimately have more questions too and we wanna not provide an experience where it's. You know, five-thirty, six o'clock at night, they're first coming in, teachers are exhausted, you know, parents have been through a long day. To maybe just have a more intentional conversation with those parents as well, so they feel just more welcomed to the school, to the, you know, if they're gonna be new to the district. And just kind of feel better about, you know, what their kids' options are gonna be and hopefully providing a greater plethora of options for our middle schoolers next year as well. So that'll be February twelfth, Wednesday, February eleventh. Plan is to have an official layout and plan for that by the end of this week, to be releasing, you should call to families then.
Alright, well, thank you, Dave. Thank you, Courtney, that was wonderful.
He's a good leader, he delegated.
Moving on, Pathfinder, ABA pack of puppet tell a story for us.
Okay, quick, um, we had our hundred showcase on the fifteenth, that went amazingly well, ours just locked it as usual. It's always very nerve-wracking for the advisors going up to that date, cause the kids, you know, the kids and stuff off and we're like, where are you going? Like. We have this to do and then the night comes and they always just.
Feel it.
Feel it.
Yes, every time.
Was it well attended?
Very, yeah. So we had the Let's Go Dark Tony guy, which I think the, you got like six thousand views. So, um, we had a lot of people show up, which was great. We had a huge variety of projects this year, which was, um, really fun to see and different because a lot of times our, specifically our middle schoolers are coming in, worked a lot on the same types of projects cause they're more teacher-led, um, but they kind of just let their own passions shine. And everybody, we had Taylor Swift projects, we have rabbits, pigeons, spark plugs, cosmetology, I mean, you name it.
The lettuce hand note.
Yeah, the lettuce, we had reading creatures, watershed projects, um, yeah, it was a whole plethora of things. So, yeah, the kids did really great, um, thank you for those that showed up, so I always appreciate it. The Pickleball Tournament, she hit on, it's February eighth. There are sign-ups in the Wellness Center as well as, um, QR codes on Facebook. The Canvas fundraiser, she also touched on, but that is, so we are partnering with the Chartered School in Denmark to do a fundraiser, one of their alumni workforce strides for Africa, which is a, um, project to get clean water in Rwanda. So we are doing a fundraiser where you purchase a canvas for five dollars, paint it, bring it back to either, um, the school or the library, and then we're having kind of like a gala. So we're gonna make a mosaic out of all the different paintings. So like, I bought a ton of them, I'm gonna bring to the daycare when the kids do it. But you could have, you know, professional artists as well. And at the, um, little gala that we're gonna have at Homestead, you'll purchase a number and whatever number you get is the most you get. So, um, that's been really fun so far, um, just to kind of see some of the pictures rolling in. People are getting very creative, some are doing like the gem art, um, or the diamond paintings, I guess. But yeah, it's a, use whatever you want and, yeah. Pathfinder, um, the kids are getting ready to work with Ms. Balloon this semester, which they always love to do. Ms. Balloon's really good, um, just in the better adult tab in their life. Cause otherwise, it's mainly just Lexi that they get all day long. So, um, they do a lot of different things with her, a lot of adulting stuff. This time they're doing, um, a lot of more big crafting type things, we have a lot of artsy kids there. And to celebrate their, um, end of the semester, they're going to the Rage Room on Valentine's Day. You've never been to one, they're really fun, so, very excited about that. And then lastly, our play-based therapist, um, started at the beginning of January at Pack of Pups. She has been absolutely amazing, um, the parents, she's been, uh, reaching out to our parents of the kids as well. Stayed really late a couple of nights for her parents to pick up at, um, five-thirty, just to connect with them and, um, really get them involved as well. Cause that's part of her play-based therapy is trying to, um, process a little bit, generalize in the home. So, yeah, she's been really great, I'm excited to see, um, just watching the kids and parents improve as she works, you know, with them, so. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, all good. Moving on, Marie, Special Ed Wellness Report.
Just one really quick thing, next week we're hosting our, um, Eagle Early Childhood Screeners Event. That'll be on February sixth in the evening, um, and then February seventh during the day. It's for, um, any children that reside in our district boundaries who have birthdays between September first of twenty-twenty and December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. So suppliers went out beyond folders, um, mailings were sent home, um, from our census data. But if anybody did not get a chance to sign up, they can contact our early childhood special ed teacher who's hosting that, Kaden Shaw. Otherwise, there's a QR code for the Google form. Any questions, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, thank you. Any other items for discussion? Alright, let's move on to action. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of December twentieth, twenty-four, special board meeting minutes of January sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and ad hoc committee meeting minutes of January twenty, twenty-nine.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve bills.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chris Schley, was it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and second by Amy, on favor.
I need a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to close open enrollment in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year for regular education seats in grade five, based on class size ranges, faculty-student ratio ranges. All other regular education seats through open enrollment will remain open.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Amy, second by Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need, let's see. Four, this is, yeah.
We did them together, but you can, you can refer them separately.
Yeah.
A motion to approve the administrator's recommendation to close open enrollment in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year for special education seats in grade five, ten, and eleven, based on class size ranges and faculty-student ratio ranges. All other special education seats through open enrollment will remain open.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Jeremy and Chrissy, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then I need a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to accept open enrollment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for regular and special education seats in grades seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve in Elgoma Venture Academy, based on class size ranges and faculty-student ratio ranges.
So moved.
Second, motion by Chris Benish, taken by Chrissy, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the adoption of the Core of Knowledge Language Arts Literacy Curriculum in grades four K to sixth to begin in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Amy, second by Chris Schley, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Academic Career Planning Course Description Handbook for Elgoma Middle and High School.
So moved.
Motion made by Chrissy.
Second.
By Chris, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to, the change to MELO policy fifty-four sixty-two to increase graduation credit requirements from twenty-four to twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jeremy, second by Amy, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the donation from Saint Mary's Rosary Society in the amount of one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars to cover negative lunch balances at the elementary school.
So moved.
Second.
And we do appreciate that and thank them.
I guess the question is, is that what it is right now? Or is that like just a donation, a random donation to help?
That's a good question.
Yeah, we'll cover a portion.
Yeah, it's just a donate, that's what they raise.
Just a donated, that's what they, okay.
Yeah.
The twelve-twenty was, that's why I'm like, is that actually what, there's out there or?
So there's more than that?
I don't know the exact amount, but.
But definitely appreciated. Do we send them, thank yous? Okay, leave a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the anonymous donation of twenty thousand dollars for new technology education equipment.
So moved. Second.
And again, whoever you are anonymous, oh, we didn't, thank you. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the donation from A and W of Elgoma and the Graff family in the amount of four thousand dollars to the band department.
So moved. Second.
Jeremy and Chris Benish, again, thank you, thank you, A and W and the Graff family. Leave a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the contract with fundamentals as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Amy, second by, was that Jeremy? Chris, you guys sound alike, if I'm not looking this way. Amy and Chris Schley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the international travel of Elgoma Venture Academy students and staff to Costa Rica from March nineteenth to the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
That was you. Jeremy and Chris Benish, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? Alright, then I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, subsections one and C for the purpose of personal matters, hires, staffing, resignations, and board self-review.
So moved. Second.
I'm gonna go this way. Chrissy and Chris Benish, vote for vote, Chris?
Yes.
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 Yes.